Okay, we should be live.
Okay, well, welcome to the Troy Planning Commission meeting for October 14th, 2020. Please call the roll.
Mr. Walkie.
Here.
Miroda.
Here.
Mrs. Erlich.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Here.
Mr. Cappers.
Here.
Mr. McGary. We have a quorum.
Okay, great. We have disseminated before us our minutes of our September 23rd meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, and deletions of those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? They stand approved. Okay, the first matter today then would be the historic district application for demolition. The staff have a report.
Yes, we do. Thank you. I will be presenting the report today. We have an application for a certificate of appropriateness from, for the Troy Planning Commission regarding demolition of a three-story commercial building, 112 through 118 West Main Street. It's 17,500 square feet and the owner is 116 West Main LLC Randy Kimmel. The owner has provided application as well as a narrative and that should be in your packet. There is total of, I think there's numbered pages 20, 23, and it will include in there, like I said, this certificate of appropriateness application and also for demolition, the narrative from the applicant, staff's aerial map and street scape pictures, and then Exhibit A, structural engineer report from TRITech, Exhibit B, contractor estimate from Brunz General Contracting, Exhibit C, adjudication order, and notice from Miami County Development Department, and then also Exhibit D, a reuse site plan. Moving on to discussion of the staff report, there was, there's no Ohio Historic Inventory Form for this building. The building is not listed on the National Register. There are, there are OHI forms for the adjacent buildings, 110 and 122 West Main, as well as across the street, Masonic Temple. Staff has reached out to the state Ohio History Connection and they also were unable to find formal documentation on the building. A building marker is placed on top of the building indicating the independent order of Oddfellows, along with a second marker located just above the first level dating the building in 1902. And then in the packet, I, I also have a picture of the, of those markers and what they, they say. The property was purchased by 116 West Main LLC Randy Kimmel in February of 2018. For a time, the building went through planning phases to preserve, redevelop the property and was marketed for lease. After the January tornado hit, of which there'll be a snippet video here shortly for your viewing. After the January tornado hit the building and did extensive damage to the roof system and the structural integrity of the whole building, the owner concluded, after a series of inspections and evaluations from Miami County Chief Building Official, the building contractor mentioned, structural engineer, that renovation was not possible both economically and due to the time constraint to resolve the unsafe conditions. The owner hired Brunz Realty Group to lease or sell the building and was unable to find a viable tenant or buyer. There is, as I mentioned, a stamped and sealed structural engineer report from TRITech indicating structural failures at the roof, diaphragms and masonry walls and possibly the floors. The owners also provide a contractor quote for just under $660,000 to meet the minimum repairs required to lift a demolition order from the, from the CBO in Miami County. Several pictures have been provided, including pictures of the structural failures that are attached to that estimate. An adjudication order declaring the building as unsafe was made by Miami County Chief Building Official, Rob England, citing the Ohio Building Code, Section 109. And the order states the building shall be erased within 60 days if the unsafe conditions are not resolved. And also it's been placarded, the front of the building as unsafe for public. We can go ahead and introduce the video now, the tornado.
Okay, I'm gonna share the screen and I'll just kind of narrate. While I'm, while I'm sharing it. Okay, can everybody see it?
Yes.
Right, Robert, can you flip the left switch down so that we have? Alright, can everybody see my cursor?
Yes.
So there are several, there are several things I'm gonna point out. This is only three minutes. I, it's cut up into two snippets. One is, this is January 11th, this is at 10 o'clock at night. It's a Saturday night. From 10:06 to 10:07, just to kind of show you the before and how things appear to start to be forming. And then I jump three minutes ahead, a whole three minutes ahead, and then you can start to see the fun. And then it's over. Alright? Well, it's kind of over, but if you're, so key points to watch are the, the precious tree, I mean, the tree lights downtown, the flagpole with the flags, and this, this area here, because right down in this area, well, I'm sorry, right, right above Bakehouse, if you keep traveling as the crow flies, that's the area of 84 Lumber and Kroger, which is allegedly where the first part of the damage happened. If you ever saw the, the pictures of 84 Lumber, it completely flattened one or two of their outdoor enclosures. Missed Kroger, but then came zigzagging through, through the downtown. And then the fourth and probably the most important is here is, here's the tavern building. And I will try to queue you up and I can go back and forward if you miss it, but as a spoiler alert, when, when you see, can you see this up here?
Yes.
This timestamp. When it's at 11, when it's 22, 11, 35, so 35 seconds, you don't want to blink and you want to be looking in this general direction right here. Okay? That's my spoiler alert for you. So this, this first part is from six o'clock, I'm sorry, six minutes after to seven minutes after. Things to note is it was windy, very little, little action on the trees. Up here, you know, we, we do have drizzle down here. It is, it is raining kind of steadily, but not heavily. And up here, you can see that, that's, that's dark and obviously, and you can see clouds that are kind of slowly coming in. What you just saw right here was one of our police officers who was four minutes too early. And so, you know, you, you just start to see a little building up here. You might see a couple of flashes of lightning in the far distance. You know, this, this camera was pretty impressive. It, it did, it looks like it's pixelating, but it's really not. So now we jump ahead to 10, 10, 10. You're starting to see a little bit movement in the tree. There, that the dog is not in the video.
I'm so sorry.
It's alright. You know, cars are just continuing to go through. If you're looking up here, you're seeing some changes that are happening. Still slowly, but right here, start looking right there. There was a flash, there was a microburst, and now there's going to come another one. And there, there's a bigger one. The wind is starting to pick up. Trees are still swaying okay, but you're, you're seeing this kind of move in and as you get closer to, you're now at 11 minutes, so you got 30 seconds to blink. And this, the top of the trav, the tavern building will get cloudier because you're going to see dust from all this wind that's going on. This is not pixelation, that is part of the wind activity that's going on. And, and all of this, you can see this is coming through. And you're starting to see right here now, you got five seconds, four seconds to go. Watching right here. There he goes. Did you catch that or you need to see it again?
Let's see it again.
Alright.
I caught it, but let's.
Here it comes, here it comes, right there, boom. That is, and now you can't see the tavern building at all, right here. Okay? What you just saw was two things. The parapet falling in front of the building and crushing at least two cars, the fronts of two cars. And then the roof on the front of the building, probably maybe 20, 30 feet of the front of the building, was all wiped off and ended up in a huge pile in front of the safety building. That's what you saw. It looked like a big ghost that was coming across. Now, I kept this going because this flag is going crazy and at one point, the flag is going straight up in the air because the tornado is trying to pick it up. That was right in the middle of the tornado when that's happening. So I only took it to 12:30 because, you know, we've got 20 minutes of video if you'd really like to see it offline, but probably not for here. Robert, can you put that back? So I'm gonna stop sharing the screen now if I can figure that out. There we go.
Good. Thanks for sharing. Does staff have anything further?
Well, to pick back up, so there are standards for demolition, for removal, that Planning Commission looks at. Two of four need to be defined and clearly provided. So when staff went through these, the applicant has provided a copy of the chief building official's declaration. The structure is unsafe and shall be erased within 60 days. Kind of moving along, the staff contacted Mr. England to state that the aftermath, their tornado compromised the structural supports of the building. He did say, being an old-style building, the actual masonry walls are structural, which shifted from the storm pulling floor joists out of their pockets. Additionally observed, rod has set into the joists over decades of leaks coming into the building. He also mentioned that he overlooks five counties, the department does, and the last five years, he's only placarded four buildings as unsafe with this being one of them. So staff concludes that standard has been met. Number two, the front of the property is fairly consistent with other structures in historic district in terms of historic character, architectural style, construction material, height, setback, and mass. It was built in a similar era, the adjacent buildings. There has been a number of alterations to the principal building in 1902, facing West Main Street. There's no OHI form, which we already went over, because historical documentation is incomplete or missing, not able to find that that standard's been met. The third standard requires square foot cost of meeting the minimum building code would exceed the square foot market value of similar structures in historic district. The information provided from the applicant from Brunz General Contracting shows 659,788, $659,788 to mentally meet the building code standards to be safe. When you couple that with the acquisition costs, your price per square foot of 67.34, that's shown in Exhibit B. And then the most similar commercial building, being a fairly unique building, would be the Masonic Temple across the street, as there was a recent acquisition of $670,000. And if you look at the square foot of that building, it comes out to $23.91, far lower, meaning that the building is in stable condition to look at as apples to apples. The applicants argue that the minimum repair costs far exceed the square feet market value of similar structures. And so they estimate the substantial additional costs on top of the 659, 660,000 number, once repairs are initiated and more damage is discovered. They're arguing basically economic obsolete structure. Staff concludes that the standard has been met. And then, of course, the fourth standard does go into the structure to declare a public nuisance with no adverse impact on the historic integrity of the street scape. I go in there about defining the public nuisance of the higher revised code that has been declared in this case. A second part of that is that there's no adverse impact to the street scape and of course, removing the structure would have a change to the visual relationship to adjacent properties. So we were not able to find that as a standard that met. I'm going to skip down to the reuse plan, which is the other provision that's required when you request a certificate of appropriateness for demolition. And the reuse plan, Planning Commission may consider appropriate reuse plans when no alternatives or mitigation is possible and the undertaking's benefits in relation to the significance of the property justify demolition as an acceptable loss. That's a section of the code. The applicant has submitted a reuse plan, results in creating a surface parking lot with green space that would meet both the city parking lot requirements and the architectural review standards. That's provided in Exhibit D. They would act on this fairly immediately with approval, provide the proper fill and seed and straw, and depend upon asphalt availability, you'd be able to implement in the spring. Any future plans for development for the site would require Planning Commission review. The applicant does feel that this, the plan mitigates negative effects from the losses of the street scape. By adding, they will add some type of landscape feature. I think they're indicating that in their plan, like a half wall utilizing some of the materials, the limestone there, provide historic tribute to the site. And I'll end my report with the, the staff recommendation. We do recommend approval as submitted or as proposed with condition that performance bond is posted with sufficient funds to ensure completion of demolition and reuse plan. The findings are based on that the property meets the criteria, at least two of the four. As previously mentioned, the property is not listed on the National Register or the Ohio Historic Inventory Form. The building has been declared unsafe to the public with orders to raise within 60 days. The applicant has demonstrated substantial economic hardship for the repair costs due to tornado damage, making the building economically obsolete. It's not eligible for the National Register. And then finally, the minimal reuse plan has been submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any questions of staff? I'll, I'll start things out. I'm just confirming that the demolition application is for the entire structure, not just the facade, but also the old courthouse in the back. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other question?
That would, that would include the, I guess, like the garage or, I mean, like all structure on that site, right?
Yes, that's the intent of the applicant. There's several substructures. I think I counted from the aerial map, at least five different roof lines, but that's the intent for all structures.
I have a question for.
Go right ahead.
So the county is the one who has deemed the building unsafe and has given the demolition order. Is it possible to have Rob England come talk to the commission about his findings? He's the one that gave the order. This is not the city's order. This is an order that the county issued.
I think he's gonna go back and he's gonna cite TRITech's structural engineering report. So it may be, maybe more appropriate to have somebody from TRITech if they'd be willing to pop on and explain the structural damages.
Talk about what they found.
I mean, Rob's always invited.
I mean, I wouldn't mind having Rob here at the same time, but having both of them discuss their findings. I mean, this is not the city's findings, this is structural engineer in the county building.
Along those same lines, th- this is a, a very large part of that city block right downtown, very easy to see when one's driving by. And, and we don't get a lot of demolition requests, although we've had a couple of them here recently. There's something that we would want to say, okay, as a planning commission, we don't want to take for granted the structural engineer that is being bought by the applicant. Do we hire our own independent consultant? And I don't know if there's any money there for that.
Well, there's, there's never enough money, but, you know, I would say TRITech is one that is used by many different places. You know, I, I was not privy to any conversation between the applicant and TRITech. I know that we've used TRITech in the past. They are well-known in the region. I'm not sure that there are too many other ones out there. But TRITech certainly has a very objective reputation. You know, I, I guess I would, I would propose that if, if they were willing to come and explain their findings, if then after that, we had questions, that we would maybe pursue something different.
Well, here's another, another thought. The county has said this has to be done within 60 days and this order was issued on September 28th. So we're already 20 days in, so 40 more days, they expect this building to come down?
No, no, no. With all due respect, the order says that it has to be resolved within 60 days. No, resolution. No, not necessarily repaired, but a plan in place would be a resolution. It says unsafe conditions must be resolved within 60 days of receipt of this letter or the building shall be erased. Now, there's no definition as to what resolve means. It's very possible that rather than having it demolished within 60 days or repaired within 60 days, that there has to be a plan for repair or a plan for demolition within 60 days.
That's another thing to clarify with Rob England, exactly what that raise means.
Before I make a motion, I want to make sure nobody else on the Planning Commission has any questions or comments.
Is it more, so I guess a procedural question. Letting Larry make his motion. Well, Larry, why don't you go ahead and make your motion first and then, because motion in the second, then we can discuss whatever.
If it's a motion to table, motion to table, don't permit discussion.
Alright, then let me ask if, assuming that we go to another meeting, would it be more appropriate to wait and ask the applicant questions at that meeting or at this meeting before we get to the point of the motion? Because some of those questions may clarify some of the misinformation that's out there and people that might weigh into it would have more information before they wait, you know?
Usually what I would say is that if, if we have questions, we pose them today, that will give staff time to get the responses for us.
Alright, if, if I can have some latitude then to ask, I think Mr. Reddick is here as a representative. He's muted and blanked.
Most certainly, go ahead.
I'm waiting for Ben to get on.
When Ben gets on, one of the questions that I believe I have is that, well, for Mr. Harris and staff, when we're talking about the cost per square foot, because that's one of the criteria that we take a look at in demolition, were insurance proceeds taken into consideration in your calculations?
Hey, guys, I'm, I'm on and I'm, I'm here with Randy Kimmels. Well.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Mr. Harris, you want to respond to that?
The insurance proceeds was not part of that calculation.
But the comparison assumed a functioning roof and no issue. So that's comparing apples to apples.
Source of funds was not part of the equation.
Okay.
Okay.
If the applicant's on, do we have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I have several, if I can.
You go right ahead.
So Ben, I think we said the building is 180 years old?
Greg, is that right? The original structure is, yes.
Okay, and so the front of the building was, was removed 118 years ago, I think is what my math said. Is that right, Greg?
Alright.
1902.
No, yeah, 118, man. Did that one in my head. And the, the front was reconstructed and a new facade was put up. Am I to understand, when, when I walked through the tour, that the front of the building was moved out towards Main Street? Actually, Main Street, I think, was, was reduced and wet at the time. By how many feet?
Oh, how wide is that portion of the structure?
Yeah, how, how, how much farther out toward Main Street did the new addition go?
I'd say probably about 30 feet.
Okay.
So where the building sits now is 30 feet more of where the original building is.
And, yeah, that's, that's.
Can you kind of take a look at the roof line? The pitched roof line is probably where the original, well, is the courthouse. So the facade on the front would have been the addition, I would imagine.
If you look at it from the back of the building, from the, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I was not gonna get up on the roof, or obviously, obviously, but thank you for that. So the, yesterday, Ben, you mentioned that of the original structure, what can be seen from the outside is on the, the south elevation, I guess is what it is, from the alley, which has the original bricks.
Yeah, that's the, the, the only portion of the original structure is, is visible from the south, basically, yeah.
Okay, and you said that that was, there were, like, that, that those walls are two feet thick?
Roughly, I think there's six courses.
Okay.
Structural brick.
And you also then said that while the building is 180 years old, was it the structural engineer that told you that the bricks were rated to last 160 years old?
So that's insurance companies, or at least what we've dealt with, declared that bricks have a useful life of 150 years, 160 years.
Okay. Switching gears. The remember this question being asked of you either this morning or yesterday afternoon, that but for the tornado, what was, if the tornado wouldn't have happened, what was the plan for the, the building? What was, if the tornado wouldn't have happened, what was the plan for the, the building?
Mixed, it would be a mixed-use development, just a lot like what we see downtown. You'd have first floor retail. Potentially a restaurant, if not, you'd have probably multiple retail storefronts. And then second and third floor would have been. Sort of a phase to probably residential units. We looked, we explored residential unit feasibility and office feasibility. And then there was also discussion about potentially taking off the, the garage section in the rear. Just to be able to expand onsite parking for the, for the building as part of the development.
Okay. You'd also mentioned that the, since January. There's been some spending that you had to do, or that the owners had to do. To keep the building from getting wet, moldy, you know, just keeping it sealed up. Do you have an estimate on how much you guys have spent on that?
Eleven to eleven, eleven thousand to fifteen thousand, depending on. Electric bills for the air scrubbers and dehumidifiers and stuff. I don't have it up on beyond the eleven thousand dollar repair. Temporary repairs were just the roughs and the windows.
Okay. Thanks, though. Ben, you either sounded different, or that's probably.
It was Randy.
Thank you, yeah. And then I guess, Mr. Chair, my last question goes to the reuse plan. I didn't catch whether Greg mentioned this or not. But am I to understand that as part of the re, the reuse plan, at least the intermediate one? That you filed with us, with parking lot? That the materials. That there, there's gonna be some kind of an attempt or guarantee, if you will. That materials from the. Existing building, such as the limestone courses. Are going to be incorporated in the. I don't know, what, what you call that, a mini wall or a quarter wall? And that you would look at. Incorporating the same. What do you call that, fencing, I guess, on top of fence railing that the county used? Across the street at Plaza, their new, their, their renovation project.
You're correct, yeah, the, the intent is to try to salvage as much of the limestone and old. Sort of stone foundation pieces as we can and reuse those in that streetscape piece that we would put up. And. Yeah, the, the, as far as the fencing material, yeah, that. That would be our goal is to get it to coordinate all the stuff that is just done here relatively recently.
Now, I guess my final thing related to that is. You're gonna salvage that plaque that's on the front and put.
Correct.
On the wall.
Yep. And we, and we would, you know. Have that plaque displayed and with. With streetscape and, you know, with, for some sort of, you know, former site of recognition. There.
I think that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Concerning the reuse plan, how will the neighboring buildings be addressed? When, when buildings get torn down, sometimes you see some not-so-good-looking stuff on those other buildings. Particularly if it's a party wall. How will that be addressed?
Yeah, the, the, there's unknowns there, but our intent is, is, well, first off, you know, as we. As the demolition is occurring and we're approaching the adjacent structures. That material will be removed. More cautiously by hand, obviously. Just to, over an abundance of caution, so we don't damage any of the structural elements of the neighboring. And then the intent is then to, you know, essentially clean up sides. So that, you know, it's not a, a rough. A brick and mortar facade. Sometimes you'll see walls go up and it's, you've got, you've got the, the mortar oozing out of the bricks. Because they didn't have to finish that side when they added it. And with this being a standalone structure that they added to the sides. Over the years. We, we anticipate that we'll be, we'll be, you know, cleaning up those walls so that they're. You know, clean, smooth surface that's presentable and coordinates with the rest of. You know, downtown.
Did your structural engineer indicate that this building that you're asking to be demolished? Aided in the stability of the neighboring structures at all?
No, he did not. And I think we even looked, looked at that. We had a couple of people look at that just as confirmation. And they said, no, the foundation, there's, there's no structural integrity between the buildings, shared between the buildings.
Commission members have any other questions, either for the applicant or staff?
I have another question. Ben, so the building is still for sale at this point?
Yeah, I mean, a, a, anybody can step in and purchase it anytime they'd like. And as far as we're concerned, even if a demolition permit is granted, we'll, we'll sell it up until the day the, the hammer starts swinging.
So anybody with a million plus dollars who can purchase the building? And then. Bring it up to code. Within the next forty days could do that.
Yes.
And then spend another million or so renovating the building.
Well, no, you, you're, the million number you're talking about is, would be purchase and repair.
Right, but then.
Right, but then that's just to get it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, redevelopment, yeah, there'd be further funds for redevelopment, correct.
Right. So we can put it out there that anybody can step up and purchase the building at a minimum for a million plus. But it has to be, the remediation has to be done in the next forty days. Well, this says the structure is unsafe and shall be raised if not repaired within sixty days of the order which is given. I'm looking, yeah. So, go by Rob England. So we need to clarify with him. At any rate, they want this building taken care of quick. So we need clarification from Rob England. On exactly what his order states, whether this building has to be fixed or repaired in the next forty days, fixed or torn down.
Is there anything else from anybody? Well, if not, it, it seems evident that we're not prepared to make a decision at this point. And I know we've received numerous letters and emails in the last twenty-four hours suggesting that we. Postpone this till our next meeting so that interested parties can contact us with any information. Or comments that they might have. So I'm gonna make a motion that the, the, this item be tabled until our October the twenty-eighth meeting. So that interested parties can contact us. And I would ask that any contact be made no later than the day before at noon, which would be noon on October the twenty-seventh. And I would request that the city staff provide methods so that the public can have access. To any information that they have and to be able to submit their, their comments to us.
I would ask that city staff also get with. See if the, the structural engineer and Rob England.
Yeah, we'll get.
Can answer some of these questions.
But that's. Yours is not very useful.
No, but it should be done in the same time.
If, yeah. There's a motion to table on the, on the table now.
Yeah, and can I ask for clarification, Larry, on that motion? You mentioned contact staff. Typically, the way we do it is we've got email. Texting or letters. And they would send it to, in normal circumstance, they would send it to the clerk. Mrs. Knight or to our office and attention to her. And then we would assemble those and get those to you. In a packet, kinda like we did with the last demolition. Is that what your intent is?
That is consistent with what I'm making the motion, but I, I think it would be. Up to the city staff to make the public aware of, of that procedure.
And we will do that. And I, I will second that motion.
There's a motion and second to table the matter. Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Early?
Yeah.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Wes Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Capper?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
I would urge the commission members before our next meeting that we'll be receiving a number of emails and letters. And you be prepared to, having read those prior to the meeting. And take those matters and comments into consideration. Okay. Next matter on the agenda is historic district application for one oh one West Water Street. Does staff have a report?
I do, Mr. Chair. We have an application for a historic review. From Levy Property LLC, Brian Dugan. At one oh one West Water Street. They are seeking to repaint the structure and re-roof it. It is Zone B three Central Business District. There is an OHI form in place. With listed character finding features. And also it was built by U.S. Skinner in eighteen sixty. The proposal is to provide the following colors. Rindwick beige for the second floor, rookwood dark brown for the first floor. Black magic for the trim. The roof was shingled previously by a green asphalt shingle. And now has a thirty-year dimensional black shingle. Structure was painted and re-roofed prior, of course, to this, to this presentation. Application has been reviewed for compliance with all requirements of zoning code. Except for the additional design standards imposed by historic district regulations, as I was saying. Staff is recommending the proposed colors that don't detract from the historic integrity of the building. The colors have a positive impact on the building. And the color scheme seems to fit within the character of that streetscape. There is pictures that I supplied. Before. And after of the house, as well as sample colors taken digitally from internet.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Commission wanna take any action? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's motion to support for the motion. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wes Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion is adopted, you have an approval.
Next, we have a historic district application for ten North Market Street for a new window sign. Does staff have a report?
Yes, I do. Alan Thrush, the applicant, has asked for, proposed and asked for a sign. Actually, two signs. On ten North Market Street. It is a multi-tenant facility building. And the building itself has allowance, in this case, the south side of the, the front of the building. Twenty-two and a half square feet is what they're allowed to have. In the front, and then nine point one six six to the rear. Applicant has proposed into install a two-inch by thirty-eight point five-inch window sign. Twenty-one point ninety square feet at the front of the building. And the window lettering is a. Vinyl with gloss over laminate applied to the glass. The thrush lettering is light blue and dark blue with colors. Additional writing has white with black edging. And there's a Photoshop picture of that sign, what it looked like in the front of that building. Provided to you. And then there's also a Photoshop show on the rear of the, of the building with a nine point one six six square foot sign. Again, with Russian sun advertised on there. Application has been reviewed for compliance, all requirements of zoning code. Except for additional design standards imposed by the historic district regulations. Be the same. Staff is recommending that the proposed signs be approved as submitted.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Question for whoever. I, I noticed that the window sign has their website on it. Didn't we have an issue with that once before? Might have even been with the former location of Thrush's.
Yeah, the primary, I remember that discussion. And we did have a problem with the advertisement as opposed to the signage. And they then amended the signage, put it on their current.
Specific, it wasn't a, an issue of the. Web address per se, it was, it looked like a business card. Okay, all right. I will move to approve.
Second.
There's motion and second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wes Meyer?
Yes.
Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Early?
Yeah.
Approved.
And next is a historic district application for seven South Market Street. Does staff have a report?
I do. Scott Huffman with Low Voltage Solutions. Is requesting the planning commission to review an application for a door window sign. And a wall sign, a building sign on the seven South Market Street. The building does have OHI form, list of property is high Victorian. It is listed on National Register. The two signs is, the building's permitted twenty-six point two five square feet. And the request is twenty-two point six seven in total. Quint Creative Signs has provided or completed the application. And they are indicating a vinyl wrapped black. Wall sign. And color board with brushed aluminum lettering. Sign size would be eighteen inches by two hundred and ten inches or twenty point four two square feet. Located across the front, just above the existing awning. There is a picture attached. Of the, of the building, streetscape, but also the proposed signage as well. The second sign will be vinyl decal that will stick to the front of the door. Two point two five square feet, indicating Low Voltage Solutions name. Will have a white lettering and black with red highlights. But also is indicated with a picture. Staff does recommend the proposed two signs as, as indicated.
Any questions of staff? Commission wanna take any action?
For approval.
A second.
Motion and second by Mr. Wes Meyer. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Wes Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Early?
Yeah.
Mr. Titterington?
Yeah.
Next, we have a historic district application for one twenty-six South Plum Street for the installation of a driveway. Does staff have a report?
We do. The applicants. The owner, Matthew. I'm not sure I pronounced this right, Dennis, and Amanda Felton. Are requesting a modification to the driveway, replacing bricks and pavers. As approximately eleven by fifty-eight, seven feet wide, fifty-eight feet long, with a concrete driveway. Property is zone R five, single family. It is in the historic district, of course. And it's between West Canal and West Franklin Street. There is an OHI form. Inscribed on property, built nineteen eleven, as a two-and-a-half-story frame, Bernack of Design house. Just describe to you the proposal, and staff finds that the concrete driveway is. Fitting within the historic district. It's not taken away from historic integrity. There's already existing hard surface there for the most part. And we recommend approval.
Any questions of staff? Commission want to take any action?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Capper?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is early?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wes Meyer?
Yes.
Approved.
Next, we have some rezoning applications, all dealing with the same zoning diff- district. The staff have a report.
I do. Then I believe this is the last one. You should have a, in your packet, it's 20, or excuse me, 19 pages, a staff report with an aerial map indicating the zoning district, the properties, the way they're currently being used, and then their proposed, proposed use. And then you also have a tax map indicating the ownership from the county. And finally, a, a zoning comparison of the B3 Central Business District and the proposed office residential district uses. Patty Rose, who has, who is the owner of 121 West Franklin Street, has provided an application for rezoning of 121 West Franklin Street, which is a mixed-use office residential use, currently zoned B3 Central Business District. And she is requesting for it to be rezoned to Office Residential, OR1. And when staff received the application, we looked at the adjacent property to the north, actually, two properties north, both 21 and 25 South Plum Street. We contacted those property owners and asked them if they would be willing to rezone as well at the same time because it made sense to look at this as not a single parcel, but that block, that streetscape, because they all have similar requests from B3 to OR residential, residential district. And I'll get that, I'll get to that here in a minute. 25 South Plum Street is, the applicant is Greg Taylor. And the ownership, under the ownership of MDP 619 Lincoln Incorporated. Just explain that's to also be three and they wish to rezone to OR1. That is a, a building that's 200 square feet. It was commercial office and recently it was received an overlay district, downtown riverfront overlay approval, I should say, from planning commission back in, I believe earlier this year in March, for the purposes of adaptive reuse. So it retains its existing underlying zoning district of B3 naturally, but it has, but the overlay district, they were able to purchase it and renovate it, which they still are doing, into multifamily units. So that's what's going on currently at 25 South Plum Street. And then 21 South Plum Street, just adjacent to that, is owned by Stevens McGrath LLC, co-owned Charles Stevens and Marvin McGrath. Charles Stevens provided the application consenting to the rezoning from B3 to OR. That particular structure is a two-family residence with just over 3,000 square feet of finished living area. If I haven't gone into detail yet about Patty Rose's reasons, which is Exhibit A, the primary reason for all three of these properties is the B3 zoning dis- the B3 zoning district does not allow for residential use on the first floor. So in her case, she has a office residential structure and she's finding that the market, because it is listed, the market is really showing more demand for a single-family use naturally on the first as well as the second floor. And the case for 20, 21 South Plum Street, it's already being used as a residence, will continually be used as a residence. So it makes sense to also rezone that to OR as well. And then 25 South Plum Street has been used as multifamily, so that would just become the primary zoning district for that, for that building. If you look at the zoning map provided, not just the locations of the three properties, but you'll find that in terms of consistency of the zoning districts, B3, of course, is that entire block on South Plum, between South Plum and South Cherry. The three properties we're talking about would be the south end there. To the west, you already have OR. To the south, you have OR. And then to the southwest, you have residential. Office residential is also considered a transitional zone between commercial and residential zones. So that is consistent and compatible with the existing surrounding uses. Moving down then to the actual standards for review that's provided in zoning code. Was zoning change and classification would be consistent with intent and purpose of the zoning code. Just mentioned that that's to be the case with the zoning proposal would be consistent with the use and surrounding uses. B, whether a proposed amendment is made necessary because of change or changing conditions in the area affected. If so, the nature of such change or changing conditions. Proposed rezoning is not made necessary because of changing conditions in the affected area. It would have, the proposed zoning would not have an adverse effect to the area, but rather be consistent with the existing surrounding uses. C, criteria says whether the uses that would be permitted in the property, if it were reclassified, would be compatible with the uses permitted on a property in the immediate vicinity. The proposed use is compatible and similar to the uses that currently exist. Whether the adequate utility service, utilities, sewer, water facilities, and all other needed public services exist, all utilities can be provided. E, the amount of vacant land that currently has the same zoning classification as proposed, as is proposed for the subject property, particularly in the vicinity of subject property and any special circumstances, if any, make a substantial part of such vacant land available for development. That's not applicable in this case. There's no vacant land in the OR nearby. And then finally, F, whether the proposed amendment would correct an error in the application of the zoning code as applied to the subject property. There's no errors being corrected here under the, the app with this application, the zoning code. In terms of public hearing, due to straightforward nature of the rezoning request, compliance with City of Toric, the request is compliant with the Toric Comprehensive Plan. The fact that city council is required to hold a public hearing, if the request is, is approved, recommended, staff is not recommending a public hearing at this time. And then finally, staff, it's the staff's opinion to, we're recommending the rezoning because it's consistent with the existing use of the properties in the surrounding area. So we are recommending from B3 to OR. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
These to be dealt with as a separate entities or a single item?
We'll need six motions, right? So I'll make a motion that we not hold a public hearing on 121 West Franklin Street.
Support? Mr. Wolke, did I hear you second that?
Yes, second.
Any further discussion on this issue? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor Oda?
Yes.
This is early?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Wes Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Capper?
Yes.
No, hearing will be
Now, as to a recommendation of council for the 121 West Franklin Street property, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is early?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wes Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Capper?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Moving on to 25 South Plum Street, do we want to have a public hearing? May I have a motion?
I'll move that we do not.
I'll second.
Mr. Wes Meyer seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Once again, an affirmative vote is not to have a public hearing.
This is early?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Wes Meyer?
Yes.
Capper?
Yes.
Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Move to recommend the rezoning.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wolke. Any further discussion?
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wes Meyer?
Yes.
Capper?
Yes.
Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 21 South Plum Street, determination as to a public hearing.
Move to not hold a hearing.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wes Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Capper?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
This is early?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
And now as to a recommendation of council, to council.
Recommendation to approve?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Capper?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is early?
Yes.
Titterton?
Yes.
Mr. Wes Meyer?
Yes.
The staff have anything else they want to discuss before the commission today?
I think that's all.
It's enough, huh? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
A motion.
Your second. Favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you all.
Thank you.